Thank you. Thank you for being here. So just by way of housekeeping, because I know a lot of people are probably new to our city council meeting. We have had some complaints that people in the audience, in the chairs, are not able to hear very well. And so hard and fast rule. And we want to make sure that everyone is being respected and feeling respected within this meeting. The second housekeeping item will be that we don't take questions from the audience. So please don't shout out, stand up, ask us questions from the audience. That's not part of our process. That's why we do the question and answer period at 6:30 prior to every single council meeting. We do have a list of people that have signed up to speak. We have a policy on that list that we limit the number of speakers because the meetings tend to get very long. So before, once we get to that portion of the meeting, I'll ask you, I'll ask people that have signed up if maybe they feel like their questions were perhaps answered or their concerns were addressed and if they want to yield their time to somebody else. So we will, we will do that. Hopefully we'll be able to answer the questions that you have prior to that meeting or prior to that portion of the agenda. Okay. I'm in charge of the opening tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity to be here. We appreciate you all being here. Kaysville is a wonderful place to live. I've lived here for more than 30 years with my family. I know that many of you are longtime residents and even if you just moved here a couple months ago, we are glad that you're here and grateful that you're here in our meeting today. One of the things that makes Kaysville so special and unique is that we really care. We have people who are passionate about our community and it is our job as a council and we are all committed to do everything we can do to maintain our quality of life here and to maintain our, the wonderful things that are special about Kaysville. And so with that being said, I will provide an opening prayer and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if you'll stand with me after that. So thank you. Our dear heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity we have to gather together in Kaysville City to discuss things that are important to our city. We're grateful as leaders to have the opportunity to lead and to be good examples and to listen. We're grateful for the residents and our members that are actively engaged. We are grateful to have the freedoms that we enjoy in our country and we ask you to please, we ask that blessings be bestowed upon those who are leading our state and our, and our nation as well. We're grateful for the collaboration and the communication and the relationships that we have and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. All right, let me find the agenda. I am so glad that all of you are here because we have some outstanding opportunities to learn about our departments and to receive some good information tonight. The first presentation will be a proclamation and a word to Officer Kalawi De Los Santos and I, and I would invite, who's going to present this? Chief Oberg? Chief Oberg will tell you a little bit about his bravery and courage and then we can elaborate from there. Don't want to steal your thunder. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm gonna, you're right, I am doing that. Sorry about that. Here, do you want to do it? Since you're already up here, okay. Okay. Sorry about that. Forgot I have something. Okay. This is a proclamation. Thank you, chief. Whereas Officer Kalawi De Los Santos has been employed with Kaysville City since January 19th, 2021. And whereas on April 15th, 2022, he displayed exceptionally, exceptional bravery and swift action in stopping a wrong way driver on I-15, thereby preventing potential tragedies and saving lives. And whereas in October of 2022, the Utah Department of Public Safety awarded Officer De Los Santos the Medal of Valor for his action on April 15th. And whereas in May of 2023, the Kaysville Police Department also awarded Officer De Los Santos the Medal of Valor for his actions on April 15th. And whereas on February 9th, Officer De Los Santos yet again displayed remarkable bravery in stopping another wrong way driver on I-15. And whereas Kalawi De Los Santos courageous efforts have exemplified the highest standards of heroism in public service, inspiring our community. And whereas through his selfless actions, he has brought honor to himself, his family, and our community, demonstrating unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of others. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize and honor individuals who exhibit extraordinary bravery and commitment to public safety. Now therefore, I Mayor Tamara Tran, along with the Kaysville City Council, to hereby proclaim February 9th as Kalawi, I'm saying your name wrong, I'm pronouncing it wrong, De Los Santos Day in Kaysville in recognition of his outstanding bravery and heroism in stopping wrong way drivers on April 15th, 2022 and on February 9th, 2024. Let us join together in expressing our deepest gratitude and admiration for his remarkable actions, which have undoubtedly saved lives and made our computer, our community a safer place for all. Thank you so much. Jason, I'll give this to you. Yeah, will you give this to him? We call him officer and so that's why I'm, I'm so sorry. But anyway, we are so, so proud of you and so grateful to be able to provide you with this honor. It's the key to the city from the city council and so thank you.
I wanted to do your wrong way sign.
Yeah. We were going to, we were going to do that.
That would have been appropriate too.
Oh, yes. Okay, we can do that.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. We can stand.
Thanks so much. Well done.
(laughter)
Third time's a charm. My son-in-law is a firefighter in Oregon. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
I hope you guys caught that. He's done this twice, wrong way drivers on I-15. So incredibly courageous. We're super proud of him and the whole department. So thank you. So next on the agenda, item 2B is Kaysville Fire Department's annual report. I'll turn the time over to Chief Erickson.
All right. Mayor, council, city leaders, residents of Kaysville, thank you for your time this evening. It'll be short and sweet. We actually had a really good year and I don't, it's hard to say that because of what we do, but our folks, our folks did really well and they worked hard. Next slide, please. Just an overview what I'll be going over as far as staffing, health and safety and wellness and what we're doing as far as training and various other things and some benchmarks that we need to hit continuously. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is just kind of the overview. That's our station one. That's how many full timers, part timers and all of our staff at the department. Oh, you got it? Good?
There.
I've never been told you couldn't hear me, so. We just ordered, obviously council knows, but for everybody else in the room, engines and ambulances are just crazy. So we ordered an engine in November of '22 and it'll be here in September of '25. Ambulance, same thing, 24, 28 month lead time. So hopefully our new medic vehicle gets here sometime shortly. Next slide, please. That's our annual training plan. That's how many classes we have to do and how many medical classes we have to do, continuing education. So we, we just keep it on the paramedic level. That way it covers all of our, our firefighters at the advanced level as well. 96% training complete. That's very difficult to do when you're busy, but we, we do a good job. Our goal is, is 80 and we've always been in the 90s. So that, that's a tribute to everybody in our department for sure. Next slide, please. Wait a minute, sorry. Can you go back to training real quick? I have a few things to add on here. So we just limited RSI program and basically you can sedate a patient to control their airway and, and get them to a safe place like a hospital. Prime example, we just had one today, an individual drove off the side of the I-15, head trauma. So we sedated the patient with our paramedics and then we flew them. So very successful. We had a good save today. On that note, we're doing some new meds. We just got, is Alvy here? This is time for you. We got some new meds. It's hypertonic saline. No idea what it does.
(inaudible) helps us hold fluid around the brain, reduce brain swelling and extorments. Fire prevention is a lot easier to achieve in Washington. This is required.
Thank you. So we're, we're doing a lot of advanced things that other departments aren't doing. So it's, it's definitely great. We brought on two advanced difficult airway classes that is taught by people at AirMed and you're basically in a dark room trying to find somebody's airway and, and tube them so we can get them going to, to a hospital. So very good things. Next slide, please. Yeah, fire prevention is taking a hit right now. Just, just being so busy, we're about 150 inspections behind. We'll get there, but with all the other things we're doing, it's just, it's, it's one of those ones just going to take, take a little backseat right now. Next slide. Health and safety. We do monthly safety meetings. Of course, our annual physical exams required for our job, make sure we're fit. And what I like to point out is that firefighter safety stand down. They announced what it is this year. It's June 16th through the 22nd and the theme of this year is fire training back to the basics. Just so happen about every two to three years when we do our annual training plan at the beginning of January, we actually go back to basics and this is the year that we're back to basics anyway. So you never want to forget those basic skills that you constantly work on. So it's been a great thing. Next slide. Here's our response areas. I know it's a, it's an eyesore map. Basically our city is cut up in the zones to include our, our highways, Western Davis Corridor included. So it's just, it's a lot of response area for us, about 10 square miles-ish. Next slide. Mutual aid. Mutual aid's been a good one this year. You could, the top set of numbers, I don't want to confuse anybody. Top set of numbers are basically in the categories that they're set in, whether it was a fire, medical, hazardous condition, which can mean a various things. The next set is those departments coming to us. So Farmington came to us 26 times, Hill Air Force Base 18 and Leighton 39. And then South Davis Metro came on up. More than likely Farmington was busy. 184 represents how many times we went to other cities and you can see the numbers there. Little confusing on the Kaysville department. So that nine number there, yes, we do respond to ourselves. But we were, we were on a call, on another call, then Leighton or Farmington came in to go take a second call that we got, then we cleared that call and took our own call. So that's, that's what that means. Next slide. Here's what we covered. We generally, the rule of thumb is five years of data. So I try and give you rolling five years of data. We have some decent data in 15, 16, those areas, but our better data started to come along in, in 18 really. So that's, that's pretty good data. Dropping from 2032 to 1950, losing fruit heights a little bit. That's about 213 calls a year that we lost out, but everything else has pretty much stayed the same. EMS, that, that's changed a little bit. When I first started in 2017, we were at about 68%. Now we're, we're at 58 as you can see, but we've been floating around that 64, 62, been constantly going down and then fire response is going up a little bit. West side Kaysville, that's anything west of I-15. We've had about 18% of our calls there and then that overlap call number is getting double hit. So 13% of the time. Also keep in mind on that number that it does go up in the summertime. July, August, we sit about 28% of our calls. So one out of every four calls, we're getting hit twice. 44 reported fires, 12 were in mutual aid. Probably the biggest thing there for you is 20 saves, which is a great thing. And then I took the data for this year so far, counting today, we have four saves so far. So it's, we're doing our jobs and, and basically time is of the essence for us to do our jobs. And that's a credit to everybody, not only behind me in this room, but in our department, to include our PD, because we work so well with them and they support whatever we do. So you know, it's a, it's a team effort with us and it, and it's a great teamwork. Next slide, please. That's just our standard. I don't want to bore you with numbers, but basically from the phone call that we get to turnout time when we're getting our gear on and get out the station for a medical call, we have six minutes to get there. It's not a whole lot of time, so we don't have time to really mess around. Got about 600, or six minutes, 24 seconds to get to all the rest of our, our calls. And when you're looking out west, that's a, that's a long way to go. Next slide. So this one here, out of the 1,950 calls, NFPA standard requires us to be 90% compliant. In other words, for every 100 calls, 90 of them, we need to be, meet those time standards. We bust a lot of calls. However, the standard does not give you that leeway to take out our non-urgent calls, our urgent, our calls that we stop at the stoplight. We stop at stop signs. We obey all traffic laws. So taking out that number, our number goes to 73% compliant. So we are getting better. The main thing is getting out the door. We do get complacent. We all do. I did today. It was a rest area call and I was like, oh man, that's going to be Farmington. It's northbound. It's not us anyway. Turned out it was southbound. It was us. So complacency gets us all and, and we just got to watch that every day for sure. Next slide. Ah, the other way. There you go. Thank you. These are our benchmarks we try to hit. Certifications is, is not an option. So all of our positions, you have to be certified to that particular level that you are. PPE inspections, we do PPE inspections monthly to make sure your gear is good, make sure your gloves are all good, make sure you have all your equipment and, and we do pretty well on that. Training, like I said, benchmarks 80%, 96%. We usually average about 95, 94, 95% the past five, six years. And there's, there's the benchmark times on response times. And that's about all I have. Any, any questions? Because you look like you're going to be busy, so.
Chief, thank you so much. That's fantastic.
No questions at all?
Everyone's doing. Any questions, anyone?
No, just thanks.
Appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. By raise of hands, who is here to listen to Commissioner Kamalu? Yes? Okay, this is going to be exciting. All right. Before, just before, one sec. Okay, right before, I just wanted to just provide just a little bit of a brief history for you. In April 2023, the task force was created. So I want to give tons of kudos and appreciation to Commissioner Kamalu. Back in last year, the House, well, the state passed a bill that required the counties to respond with a winter response. And so Commissioner Kamalu took this seriously. Some of the other counties did not take this seriously and put together a task force of volunteers, which is comprised of several mayors from Davis County. I volunteered to serve as, as a task force member. On October 16th, during a council of governments meeting, which is a meeting of all the mayors and then the county, county commissioners and some other individuals, was asked whether or not we wanted to consider billboards. We were kind of looking at, okay, where could a property potentially be that would be the right property in the right location with wraparound services to support some kind of a shelter? Due to Commissioner Kamalu's leadership, you know, we've talked about should we provide just sort of a quick fix or should we try to really get serious about it and try to help solve the problem that, that does exist for homelessness? And so we as a task force decided, okay, we're going to take this seriously. So during that cog meeting, we were asked to go back and ask our cities, there's a property that was in one of the cities owned by a company that owns billboards. And so they said, hey, you know what? Maybe we would be able to discount this property for you to build some sort of facility here. If the county, if the cities along the I-15 corridor would be willing to maybe have a discussion about allowing billboards. So in city council, this was a discussion on October 16th. So during the October 19th city council meeting, we brought it to the council and said, hey, council, what do you think about this? Right now Kaysville doesn't allow billboards along I-15 and I think all of the, most, most if not all of the cities in Davis County don't allow that. And so we had a discussion and we, we talked about it, pros and cons of doing that, decided that that's not something that we really wanted to seriously consider. So then on December, December 14th, the county reached out and said, hey, you know, we would like you to come, invited me to take a tour of the emissions center for Code Blue. And so I invited Jason Christensen, who's our city manager, and toured that facility with some of the county people to kind of look at the city, look at the location to, you know, see if it had any, if, if it was a plausible idea or a good, a good location for a Code Blue response. On January 13th, we toured Switchpoint, which is a facility that provides services and I'm sure Commissioner Kamalu can give you some more detail about that. But we did that as a task force. It's located in Tuilla. So that was interesting. It's run by a nonprofit, private, well, nonprofit company, not a government entity. So then we did that. On January 4th, on the city council agenda, we talked about winter response and Code Blue because we were having these discussions as a task force. So we talked again about that during our meetings and we've kind of continued to update, update the council about where we're at as far as just conversations and, and conversations, really, that's all it's been so far. So then on the January 17th, council of governments meeting, we also talked about that and that's a public meeting. Again, we talked about kind of a winter response and what's the city going to do or what's the, what's the county going to do and involve cities in, in responding to that request. And so Commissioner Kamalu, I think it was back in January, she had said, hey, Tammy, I could come to a work session and I could kind of, you know, talk to your council about this. And I'd actually forgotten that she'd offered to, to come to a work session until later. And so she's on the agenda today to be a presenter only because, you know, she volunteered to, hey, let me, let me provide some updates. And she'll talk about the legislative requests that the task force came up with and, and how that went. And so I really appreciate her being here to be able to kind of give us some quick updates and some information. While she's speaking, she'll have the, she'll have the floor. The council then will have an opportunity to ask her questions and then those of you that have signed up to speak will have an opportunity to either yield your time. Hopefully your conference, your questions will be answered. If not, if you've signed up to speak, you'll have an opportunity to speak. And so I will now turn the time over to Commissioner Kamalu and we'll give her the floor. So let's be respectful. Thank you. Would you like to turn around and address or would you like to address us? How would you like to do?
I saw Anne Marie deal with moving this.
I was gonna say, it doesn't really move. So you could stand on the other side. You, you could stand on the other side or you can just address us, however you want to do this.
Yeah, I'll probably do a little of both.
Okay.
So my name is Lorene Kamalu. I live in Kaysville. My first public service was serving as a planning commissioner in Kaysville. Fantastic experience. I just want to start really by thanking every public servant in this room because it's, it's a wonderful thing to serve your community and it's not always easy. Sometimes people's lives are on the line as we've already witnessed tonight, but I loved it. When I came to my first planning commission meeting in January of 2014, I sat right here where Abigail Hunt is only, it was the old dais. And next to me was a guy whose name was Jake Garn. And I said, gosh, your name sounds familiar. And he said, yes, my father was a United States Senator. And sometime during our, our first year, he said two different things that have stayed with me. Number one, he said, I wish everyone in the federal government had started on a city planning commission because it all starts right there. The second thing I remember him saying kind of relates to tonight and he said, unfortunately, when disinformation is spread, it's like taking a feather pillow to the wind and there go all the feathers and you can never get it back. And so somehow some disinformation started on this topic in Kaysville and I'm, I'm sorry that it did. It has impacted everyone in this room and beyond. And so I've had the chance, just like our city leaders here, to be able to give accurate information and it has helped a lot of people. Some know me and have reached out directly and have already gotten this. Some people have emailed and I've sent it back too as soon as I'm able to get to the email. But, and it'll be interesting to see, yeah, what the questions are after this. First with the council questions and then anything in the public comment. I will continue to answer any, any further questions that come, but these are the facts and they're pretty simple and they're pretty, you know, these are the facts. And so even when a news station came to Kaysville after the disinformation was happening, a different news station came to me the next day and I gave them the facts and they had intended to come to Kaysville and do more interviews around the area. And they said, well, I guess we don't have any reason to go to Kaysville next. I said, I guess not. So I look forward to, I have definitely looked forward to this for a long time. The reason I offered to mayor, it was actually on January 3rd when we did that Tuilla tour, is because I had seen a small little piece in the Davis Journal that was not very accurate. They've done at least three stories on this. The other two have been very accurate, but when that one was just not quite right and this was still back in 2023, I just remembered it and when mayor and I had a chance to be together on the bus, I said, I'm happy to come. So here are, here are the basic facts. So a law passed in 2023 requiring Code Blue sheltering for this past, well, the winter we just barely finished. It's the first day of spring. When that bill was produced, the county was very shocked. The county knew nothing about it. No one had collaborated with us, unfortunately. And I fought it. I fought that bill. It did still become law. The bill HB 2, what was it, 299? Yeah. That bill was only for counties of the second class that don't already have a shelter. There's only two counties of the second class, which is a population size, that currently don't have a community resource center and that's the current word now. They do them a little differently than the, kind of the older shelters. So the only, the only two counties that this then impacted in a big way was Davis County and Utah County. So this was a really big deal. And in fact, that law is still problematic. The reason it's problematic is because it does nothing to The reason it's problematic is because it does nothing to get at the drivers of homelessness. It only tells people to, tells communities that they need to bring people in when the temperature gets to 15 degrees, or now in this latest session, they changed it to 18 degrees. So you have to bring them in when there's a Code Blue alert during the winter. And then the other part of the law is even trickier. It requires a winter response that you have to have from October 15th to the end of April, you have to have a certain number of beds and a way to take care of folks experiencing homelessness during that part of the year and not the whole year. And so who has a facility and who has staffing for part of a year? How do you hire people to do that? And by the way, guess what? Government doesn't even do this. So it's nonprofits. And so it's very tricky, and the law is still that, although in this latest session, they tweaked the law, and this will apply to things I say later. When a county impacted by this new law chooses to do something that is better than the law, then they, like a permanent and comprehensive facility for folks experiencing homelessness within that very county, then there is an extension now of time. And that, that has now become the opportunity for Davis County and Utah County. So a little bit of background about the law. This past winter that we just finished, I mean, who knows? Hopefully, we won't have any more Code Blue days, but we did have a number of Code Blue days because we didn't have any time to get a facility. The only option for us to fulfill the new law was to put people in hotel motel vouchers. And the money for that, that was, that was provided ran out, it ran out, gosh, a month or two ago, a couple of months ago. And it also overwhelmed the Community Action Agency Open Doors. So you can see that, that the law has been pretty tricky. So the task force was required by law. It's really important that everyone here and beyond, you can spread this, understands that the law requires a task force of voting members. The county is not in control of saying, this is the way it's going to happen. This is where it will be. This is the way it's going to happen. The county does not have the authority to do that. Does everyone understand that? That's kind of a big deal. Here and everywhere else where a task force exists, there are voting members. And so there are currently eight voting members, and mayors were given the opportunity to volunteer for that. Six stepped up and a seventh stepped up in January when this was updated. I am the eighth voting member. And the reason that, that I felt the impact of this so strongly, and I provided the latest portfolio list of the Davis County Commission to the council, but I also put a stack of them on the table out here for any of the rest of you who want to look at that, is because my seat in the commission has a lot of health, human services, and criminal justice in it. And the county is a convener of the nonprofits who do the work, if that makes sense. So this task force formed immediately, as the mayor said, and we have had monthly meetings. The task force and the voting members includes all the mayors in Davis County cities who wanted to be on the task force and, and I as the commissioner voting member. I do a lot of work, as I told you. This is my sixth year as a county commissioner, so this new effort definitely fits in my service. All right, Davis County has a much higher number of unhoused people than we realized. When that bill passed into law, what I knew was that our point in time count last year in January was 45 people who were found out in the middle of the winter, in the middle of a January night. And this count happens all over the U.S. It's required. This year is not far off of that number. But what I learned is, is that we had data given to us by the state and also Davis Behavioral Health and also the Davis School District. So now I'll share with you the data that has very much informed our task force. Davis County had over 200 people from our cities checked into other shelters over the last year. And Davis Behavioral Health has given services to over 500 people in the last year who do not have a home. These are Davis County people. 3,500 teenagers accessed services in the teen centers this past fall semester. 3,500 in one semester. Here's another thing that I didn't know until November. I got a call, actually, I got a text from someone that said, did you know that there is a tent camp in Leighton that started in April? I said, no, I did not know that. And so in December, I, I took a slow little drive on my way home from Aaron's, and I saw that tent camp. It had started in April and it had been growing all year long, a bunch of tents down on the south side of the front runner tracks off of King Street. That's where it was. And then by the end of that month, well, on Christmas Eve, the mayor herself in Leighton went and talked with folks and was helpful to folks. And then at the end of the month, that tent camp was disbanded by, by the police of Leighton. All right, so there is a local homeless council. It's called an LHC. Some of you know what that is. Those also exist all around the nation. And I am the chair of that local homeless council, but again, the providers of services for our most vulnerable population are the nonprofits in this county. So they, they come to the table. It's Safe Harbor Domestic Violence Shelter, I'm on that board. It's Davis Behavioral Health, I'm on that board. It's also the Community Action Agency, those exist all over the nation, that's Open Doors. I'm not on that board. So, but the people who have housing and help the most vulnerable people in our county come together every other month in an LHC meeting. The new law requires the local homeless council to work with the state on the required number of beds for the winter response. Our best estimate of what we would be required to do if we only did winter response and then those people just go somewhere else during the day is probably around 60 something beds. So that LHC's number one strategy is the prevention of homelessness and getting upstream because it's more effective and it's much better for everyone. So that is, and already has been, our number one strategy. If you don't already know, Davis Behavioral Health currently has a scattered site for the chronically mentally ill who would otherwise be homeless in this county. And they are a reason that we haven't seen more of the population over the last decade plus. So they already have 140 beds of a scattered site of permanent supportive housing that they currently operate to help folks with chronic mental illness who would otherwise be homeless. Where a permanent supportive housing is upstream of homelessness, it is the gold standard. Where there's not enough permanent supportive housing, you will have more homeless folks out and, and not wanting even to go into shelters. So Davis Behavioral Health needs more of this housing. They told me in the last year that they had been surprised at how many people experiencing homelessness have come to the receiving center, which is in Leighton. And they have said, these numbers have been growing. And by the way, we've documented at least 500 who've come in for services. This, this population cannot just land on one agency that's working really hard to do great work. So that's the prevention. They were awarded the last part of the funding that they needed for another 60-unit facility of permanent supportive housing, which is really good news. Just for comparison, St. George in Washington County has a wonderful facility that started almost 10 years ago. It is called Switchpoint. They give tours. If you ever get down to St. George, by all means, go by and ask them for a tour. When I saw Switchpoint in May, it was like a light at the end of a tunnel for me. It's a happy place. There's no congregating. They're not kicked out during the day, and they don't have to line up again at night. In fact, most people stabilize and leave the facility within 30 days. Their model is very different, and it's very successful. The person who started it 10 years ago came from Oregon. If you want to see what happens when communities do nothing, there's multiple cities you can go visit in the United States and see what happens when you do nothing. So she is very passionate and has been amazing. She came from Oregon. So Washington County is, oh, Switchpoint, very successful. They're open 24/7, 365. Most people stabilize and leave within 30 days. They have other innovative programs as well as, listen to this, much community support and volunteering. It is a happy place. It's amazing. It's incredible. I have family members down there volunteering and donating that I didn't even know that they were doing it. But once I learned about Switchpoint, it's like people came out of the woodwork because it actually works. It's super inspiring. So just for comparison, another county of the second class with a much lower population is Washington County. They are about a third our size in population. And then the latest one that opened up is in Tuilla City and Tuilla County, and they are about a fifth of our population. So you can probably guess that with a growing population, including the incredibly challenging prices for housing, renting and buying, that is, we are experiencing in Utah and especially in Davis County, there's a reason that these numbers have been increasing. So given all of this data, the voting task force members chose to not have an insignificant effort that does not work. They voted on a permanent comprehensive facility. And it was brought up again in yesterday's meeting, and they voted again for a permanent comprehensive facility so that we can do the paperwork and give it to the state by the deadline of August, which gives us another year to have something in place. The task force has not determined where the site will be. Never has. Also, we don't have money yet to do what is needed. We asked for state money because of last year's mandate, but we have not received any state funds yet. So that's tricky. And it's also hard. If you don't already know, we're the smallest geographical square miles of any of the 29 counties, the third largest population. I'm sure you do know, it is hard to find and buy land in this, in this county. Not to mention, you can't plop this just anywhere. There should be public transit opportunity, and there should also be services close by. I have visited also the Lantern House facility in Ogden in yet another county, much smaller than we are, in Weber County. And it used to be in one place where their services were closer, and then when they moved it, however many years ago, the service is not so close, and that's been really challenging for the population. So anyway, there's a, there's a lot to it. It's complex, it's challenging. My mouth is now very dry, but hopefully that was helpful. And while I grab my water, maybe the council can see what questions they have, and I'll turn around. Thank you so much. You were just really attentive. Thanks for really listening and learning about this.
All right, council, do we have any questions?
Yeah. I have a few questions.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, first of all, Commissioner, thank you for coming tonight. It really means a lot to us and I know the community. Sorry, I'm trying to speak up. And thank you for your work on the task force and taking this on. As you mentioned, and as the mayor mentioned, the state, for lack of better words than my words, put forth a half-baked bill and put us in a, in a tough situation. But I applaud the task force for moving forward and trying to get ahead of it to make some decisions, which will work. So just a few quick questions. You mentioned the task force had a vote to, to instead of doing a temporary location, a permanent location. Do you recall or know when that vote took place?
Yeah, December 4th.
In this process, December 4th, okay. And between, between the time in October when it was discussed at the COG meeting with the mayors and the commissioners and December 4th, could you kind of explain the sort of actions that the county and the task force took to get to that decision just a little more clearly?
Well, again, it's just the task force decision. It wasn't the county. The in-between task force monthly meetings, the county staff will work on things that the task force talked about. For example, just researching, anything up for sale that's a possibility in size or location. There's been a lot of, you know, work in between. But, and the council of governments meeting, I think that's the one where I'm not there, as I recall. So that's-
October, what was the day? October 18th?
Whichever, whichever meeting had the, whichever meeting had the idea to see whether an owner of property would be willing to sell if, if there were enough billboards, that's the meeting I was not at. I heard about that one after the fact. So, yeah, as far as like what you're asking, what's happened between the COG-
Yeah, I'm just curious about the conversations with the task force, if you could speak to that about, you know, the state put forth this mandate, but they didn't put forth any funds, not much support. And, you know, it's tricky without funds to find a location, a property, a building or whatnot. And so I was curious what the task force, their methodology was to come to a permanent solution versus a temporary Code Blue shelter solution. Because I know with some of the mayors, there was an interest in acting quickly before the winter came to try to find a good solution for some of the most disadvantaged in our county. And so just curious about speaking to that, if you have any more to-
You know, not really. I think I've said it, those task force meetings happened every single month and just had to be pretty methodical about, you know, what's even out there for sale in our county that could be converted? What's the need? What's the data? There just wasn't that much time from the middle of October when the Code Blue timeframe started. And then we knew that the legislative session was starting, and we knew we needed to ask for money. And so by December 4th, the task force all agreed that we needed a meeting to, you know, really come to exactly what we should be asking for in the legislative session. And so that's why they had that vote that night.
Okay.
And then because of that vote, we prepared a request for appropriation for one time and then for ongoing. But again, it wasn't, it wasn't funded.
With that permanent solution in mind, could you kind of speak to that, like what that would look like?
Permanent comprehensive? What that looks like?
Yeah, just a, just a little bit more. I think for the general public, our residents, it would be helpful to know, what would that look like in Davis County? We don't know, like, as you mentioned, where it would be located, but kind of the process of what could we do?
Yeah, let me describe-
In a perfect world, or-
Let me describe what any of you can go see, and I think some people have gone to see the Switchpoint in St. George. So they had a, a place that the city and the county and donors and Y-Tech funding were all able to come together in a capital stack to get an existing building and to renovate it. And again, it's 24/7, 365 days. It is a facility that is locked. So people will come, and then if they are in need of services, they, they buzz it and they're let in, and they go straight to a desk where it's just right there, and, and staff and case managers welcoming them, asking them, you know, are you here? Tell us what you need. And so they receive case management. And the motto of Switchpoint is opportunity with accountability. The founder herself says she doesn't want to work harder on people's homelessness than they are working on it themselves. So they try to get at the drivers of homelessness with the case management. So I will tell you, I wonder if you already know, one of the biggest drivers of homelessness- know, one of the biggest drivers of homelessness, it is domestic violence. Domestic violence makes people who have to flee that situation automatically homeless. You may not know, we have a lot of domestic violence in the state of Utah, including the county of Davis County. A lot of domestic violence. And it is also true that people with chronic serious mental illness, and people with substance use disorders, you know, there's all the rest of it. And then there's also just kind of temporary kinds of things. Perhaps some of us have had folks in the last three years come back to live in our basements because of situations, right? And if you don't have, you know, family or other people that can, you can just go be with, some folks, that they have a really, you know, not very many options. So that shelter has space where it's called, it's a big community room space. People who are not residing there can come in, and we're required by law to have a space like that for the code blue. So it would have a space for folks who are not staying there but need to come get out of the cold. It has all of the different rooms of the professional licensed counselors to work with these folks to get at the drivers of homelessness, connect them to behavioral health services, connect them to substance use recovery programs. And again, their rates of stabilization and leaving the shelter are very high. This is how a place should run. It's exactly how a place should run. They also have microenterprises. And so they have a greenhouse, they grow and sell stuff. People work jobs while they're there. Did you know that? They have jobs that people can work and earn Switchpoint bucks, and they can spend them at the thrift store and other places to get things that they need. So this is the one I've been most impressed with, and they've been finding more locations to be because people want that.
Well, thank you for speaking to that. That's, I think that's helpful, and I want to go tour Switchpoint, so I'm going to plan to do that in the near future. Just real quick, last questions here. I don't want to take up too much time. So, you know, the reason why we have a lot of people in the audience is we wanted to get ahead of this. And it's not that at any point in time, us as a council said it was going to, it was going to be in Kaseville, or there would be a location in Kaseville. But with the discussion of a potential of using county facilities, because there was no funding from the state. And I know that the county, I have an email here, that the task force requested to tour the I and M building in Kaseville to discuss its use for the upcoming code blue events related to the homeless in Davis County. And it came from the county, and...
Who do you want to show me?
Sure. And it was mentioned that it's quite urgent because of the winter coming up. And we understand the absolute constraints with what the state did without, you know, supporting this effort or putting funds behind their mandate. And so I think with, with the, just looking at county buildings within the community, you know, our whole thing was getting ahead of this and just trying to make the public aware. Not that we're insinuating that it was even a possibility, but we wanted everyone's voices to be heard, and we wanted to hear from the public to say, hey, what do you think about this? And we've, we've heard from people on both sides that they want us to help homelessness, they, people who are nervous and scared, and they live near the facility. And so I was just curious, that was part of my questioning as far as, like, the thought process of...
Yeah, this is good to explain.
Moving through that. And could you just kind of explain that? I know that...
Absolutely.
I kind of know the answer, that it just wouldn't really work. But just the process of the task force looking at that facility?
The task force was never looking at it. So the exact words in the email, Commissioner Kamali would like to find a time to tour the I and M building in Kaseville to discuss its use for upcoming code blue events related to the homeless in Davis County. So our staff sent this. I would have worded that a little bit differently. Here's a few dates that could work. Code blue situations make this tour urgent. We would like to schedule this as soon as possible. So this was from, on Friday, December the 8th. This is the county brainstorming, is there anything existing, since we're using only hotel motel vouchers for this current winter? And we, you know, we don't know if that's going to work all the way through the winter, or is there any other place? The Health Department Director had said in one of the meetings that they would be out of that facility after the year 2024. And so I had never been through that facility, and others hadn't either. So we all thought it would be a good idea to go see. And I'm the one who wanted to invite Mayor Tran so that she would be included to see it as well. So I invited Mayor, and she invited the city manager, and we toured it. And that was on December 14th?
I believe so.
Yep. And so, again, the exact wording is code blue events, so not a homeless shelter, but getting people in if there was...
Before the night, yeah.
Yeah. So, and then the other thing is, while there, you know, obviously, this is a concerning situation for all of us, since we didn't have time, and since there is a tremendous need and risk with code blue events. And the mayor took it very seriously and said, you know, what are the chances? Someone else, one of the other staff said, chances are very slim, because it's not what the people voted, not what the task force voted to have, and we're looking to do something completely different.
Okay. And that's really helpful. I think there's a lot of concern. And sorry, I meant to pull this up earlier, and it was buried in my stack of papers. But I think it's helpful for you to speak to that, because there's a lot of emotion in the community, and word travels fast, and we have a great community here. And so it's helpful to just kind of clear the air and explain, you know, kind of the process and what's happening.
Well, as I understand it, at least this is what I heard, it didn't, again, I live in Kaseville. This did not come to the social media in my neighborhood, but I hear that it did go widely around. And I'm not surprised, right? That would be like news of the decade for the city of Kaseville. So, again, disinformation. I've heard everything, I have now heard everything from 600 to 800 beds of a shelter to, I mean, on and on. It's just like the game of telephone, what happened. And so there is someone, who knows who, I don't care to know who, who made a bunch of posts that people, people experiencing homelessness would get bussed into our county and into our city specifically, and that there was going to be a shelter. So as you can see, far from reality. But I'm not surprised that the good people of Kaseville, you know, deserve to know exactly what's going on. And then someone has also asked me, how can we follow this? We have public commission meetings almost every single Tuesday at 10:00. And periodically, since that law passed, even before it law passed, when I was fighting that law, remember, the bill, I periodically give an update when, when there is an update to, you know, that we have. And the newspaper has been following those, the Davis Journal. So that's probably the best. Some people reach out to me directly again, and that's fine, too. Yeah.
Thanks. That's all for me. Sorry if I stole anyone else's questions.
Appreciate those questions and appreciate your responses. Councilmember Adams, you, did you have something?
Oh, good, okay. I just ask questions, easy questions, I think. When you talk about, thank you so much, Commissioner. Do you need more water? Here you go. I have two.
She might like the Monster.
What's that?
She might like the Monster.
Oh, the Monster drink, yeah. Got to stay awake and sharp. When you talk about the two things that are required to have, and I have toured Switchpoint, and it is pretty cool, the way that they're doing it is much, much more focused on helping people. So, yeah, I like their model, for sure. But when you talk about, you said there were two things that are definitely required, transportation and services. Define maybe services for those of us.
Yeah, and it's not required by law, but any facility that actually is working for that population, they don't have transportation cars so much, right? So public transit needs to be accessible. There's a lot of places in our county where it just, there is no public transit going to those areas. So public transit and then services. There are numbers of organizations that have helpful services for people experiencing, you know, very difficult life situations. Department of Workforce Services, there's food pantries, there's all kinds of, there's just all kinds of nonprofits. And so even there's a community health clinics. So there's certainly several things that already exist in our county. Like I said, the Community Action Agency has a respite nursery. There's a lot of organizations with a lot of helps. And so sometimes they're scattered, and sometimes there's places where more, more of them are located. So that's what I meant. It's not required, though. That just, it just makes sense.
Makes, it makes sense, yeah. And I like, I think about Switchpoint in St. George, it's on Main Street. I mean, it's surrounded by restaurants and some businesses.
It's in a commercial area.
It's in a commercial area. Tons of public transportation. They have a building across the street where they sell the goods that they, that they make, you know, during their craft, craftings. And so I guess I asked that question because, you know, obviously, Kaseville doesn't have either, either of those things in the city or near some of these locations that were discussed, the emissions building. And I think you've already answered that question. Was the emissions building toured? You said yes it was, and the outcome of that tour was?
Yeah, what the Ryan Steinbeagle said to Mayor, what are the chances of anything being here? Slim to none.
Slim to none, okay. So has it ever been decided to use a building in Kaseville for either code blue or a shelter?
Never.
Never, okay. Has it been discussed to buy land, namely eight to nine acres that's owned by Kaseville near Boondocks?
Never.
Okay. Well, those are my questions. I mean, I just, you know, thank you for answering that. And I hope everybody knows here that that, those are the clear answers. We, it's never been discussed to buy land near Boondocks. Kaseville owns that land. That land's going to be extremely useful for us in the future, as far as the power company and our public works. We're not giving up that land. I don't know where that rumor started. We're not building a homeless shelter in Kaseville. It'd be a cold day in hell before I let one come here. And so, I, you know, and I think most of council feels this way. Look, you know, I said this in a previous building, meeting, I'm a Christian bearing person, and every time I get out of my car and it's cold, I think and pray that night, please let people who are outside find a place to be warm, because I just, I know that that would be the worst thing. I hate being cold. There's a show Naked and Afraid that we sometimes watch as a family. These people are out there, no clothes, I don't know why they do it, and they're out in the cold. And I'm like, I can't think of anything worse to be out in the cold. So my heart goes out to them. But it needs to make sense. It needs to make sense. And it doesn't make sense in Kaseville. I hope that we can help solve this. I'm so grateful for our mayor for volunteering to be on the task force and, you know, come up with a solution. And hopefully, the state gets the message that we need the money, and we need a location like St. George that's in a commercial area with services that can help these people get back on their feet. Thank you for all the hard work you've done, and I appreciate that. That's, yield my time.
I want to just also say to the group that the man who is over the Utah Office of Homeless Services was asked by the governor to head it up and to find better ways for the state. His name is the former President Wayne Niederhauser, President of the Senate. He is a great man and a great leader. And I don't, I don't want to come across as sounding like, you know, the state is horrible, right? It's very easy to put blame instead of be part of the solution. And do you know, he, his, he and his wife go out every Friday night? They have, ever since he started in this job, three years ago. They go out every Friday night to where the folks who are experiencing homelessness are, are out in Salt Lake City. And they've gotten to know them. And he's done a lot of good work because he's dug into this very complex issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Oaks?
Yeah, thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your time and your efforts. And it's, you know, you talked that the last two years, as they've done, the counts, you know, there's, I know that the mayor...
Point in time count, yeah.
Point in time count.
I did it in 2016 when I was a planning commissioner.
Okay. And I think you said the number's about 45. And I think that, you know, so it's a low number.
That was last year's, yeah, a low number.
And this year was about the same, I believe.
Forty-six.
Forty, you know, and so what doesn't compute to me is then you talk about, in the high school, that talked, was it 3,500? And so I'm just trying to...
Yeah.
Make these compute. And so what kind of criteria is it for people to access or get the services? Are they kids just looking for freebies? I mean, I don't know. Is that...
There's a lot of data in the school district. People have to qualify for the free and reduced lunch, right? Everyone knows about that. You can see a heat map of where people qualify with approving their income for a free and reduced lunch. Every single year, year after year after year after year, this is a long time. Anyone who starts to learn about students experiencing homelessness, or doubling up on couches, or, you know, families, again, I talked about domestic violence, families doubled up. They have data. It's data. And the definition of homelessness by the McKinney-Vento, which is some law back in the, used in the schools in the federal government, like, they have even a little bit broader definition of what that is and who qualifies for help. And so it's data-driven. The way I've described it after this law passed, and I was given more data, we should always be data-driven in government, is that that point in, I think about it, the end of January every year on a Wednesday night, in the middle of the night at 3:00 in the morning, this is when teams of people are going out to find folks experiencing homelessness. Now you tell me, because I'm like Mr. Adams over here, I don't really even like to be cold. But you're, you're, you're hard to find if it's cold on that night in January. You are somewhere probably hard to find. That number that is being found are people pretty much in, in cars or tents or something that's standing out, so that, you know, those teams of people are going straight to see where they are. And the Open Doors Organization, the Community Action Agency, they work with folks experiencing homelessness year-round. They know where the places tend to be. As you maybe know, in that Walmart area in Leighton is kind of one of those places. If you go there, you'll, if you go around and you look closely, you'll find folks. You'll find more folks in the summer. But the point in time count exists to be able to count people in shelters more readily. Because if people around the nation, they're more likely to be in shelters during that middle of the night at the end of January, in the winter. So it's actually a count most effective where shelters exist. If that makes sense. So I've described it this year as that count in a place like Davis County, where we do not have a shelter other than a domestic violence shelter. That, that number last year, 45, which was then verified and duplicated, they're still finishing it for this year, so they're not saying it quite. But it's like the, it's like the tip of the iceberg. All of the rest of this data is reliable data. Over 200 of our people from our cities in other shelters that exist, they have to take intake data and say the last place that they lived stably housed for 90 days. There are over 200 of ours going to other shelters. And then Davis Behaviors, to me, is the most compelling of all, because people need their services and go to their services, and they also have very accurate data.
Okay.
And that's over 500 in the last year.
Oh, okay.
Is that helpful?
No. Yes, sort of. But, you know, but without, without seeing the data, you know, again, I, just the magnitude of the numbers, and I understand... of the numbers, and I understand the domestic violence, I understand some of the issues. It's just the, the magnitude of the disparity when you're talking that many, you know, high school kids. But my, my other question, you know, if, if we end up trying to bring an organization like Switchpoint, a Switchpoint-like organization into Davis County that might be able to help the problem, we don't, you know, these are nonprofits normally. It's usually, you know, it's something the government doesn't want to get into. So, is the county or is the state actively pursuing to try to entice an organization like that to stand up here in Davis County?
Yeah, great question. So, Switchpoint, as I said, started 10 years ago in St. George, a place we all love to go. And Washington County has been super successful down there. The city and the county is so happy to have them. And now, they have other places that they have been asked to come and serve. And soon as that law passed, and when I found out about them, the very, well, in May of last year, and went and toured it, I, I flat-out just said, are you, you know, here, you know about this law, you know about Davis County? Would you be interested in being up here? And, and she said, absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And they've since opened the one in Toilla, although that took three years to be ready to open in Toilla. So, as you can see, the timeframe is tricky. We've been doing our best to figure it out.
And it's an unfunded mandate. And so, the, the funds still have to come from somewhere.
The good news is, in our task force meeting yesterday, I, again, I give a lot of credit to Wayne Niederhauser and to his staff. It's a complex, difficult issue, has not necessarily been going in a great way in our state, but it must. It affects the economics of the state. Do people go to San Francisco now for vacation and spending money? Right? We all know the places where it's not gone well. It impacts cities and states when it is not done well. And so, so, yeah, it's something that, oh, in the meeting, Wayne said, of course, their office was given some money. They want to help as they can. It's still pretty fresh after the session ended. There's also a philanthropic community. Carol Hollowell, who started Switchpoint, talks about a capital stack. They have a lot of donors because people want to donate where it actually works. And so, we're not done, you know, figuring it out. And what people should know is that the very last of the federal relief money that came to Davis County, went to all the counties in the whole U.S., just, just money went out, right? The, we tried really hard to program generational projects that would benefit people the next 50 years with that money that came to Davis County. There was 1.5 million left that hadn't been programmed when this law passed and we have set that aside, so. You're welcome.
Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Hunt, thank you.
Okay, so thankfully, Perry asked most, or Councilmember Oakes, asked most of my questions. So, I just have one quick question for you. Can you just, and thanks for coming. Can you just remind us, or if, let us know, is there like a, a date that we have to come up with a solution by? Like you said, we were able to extend. Do we know when we have to have a solution?
Yeah, thanks. That's part of how they did tweak the law. And, you know, kudos to them. Our lobbyists worked really hard. We said, we need money and we need more time. It was a very difficult year for appropriations in the state legislature, but we got more time. And so, by this August, we have to submit our plan for a permanent comprehensive facility, even if we don't know exactly what it is or where it will be yet. Just, we're committing to the plan, which gives us one more year. And then, we have to be able to implement in, by August or have our final submission to the state in August of 2026.
Now, when you talk about final submission, that is the plan submission, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, just, so just so everyone knows, this is a plan. It's, it's, like it was mentioned, it's an unfunded mandate as far as we're concerned because it's going to cost a lot of money. So, this is a plan telling the state that, yes, Davis County realizes that there should be a solution and we're trying to be in front of that solution. It doesn't identify a facility necessarily or land or a location. We're still, we don't even have details to really establish how large the facility should be yet. So, just wanted to make sure that everyone understands how that works.
The state, there are mitigation funds, like this has existed. The cities knew more about this than the county for, when that, that bill first appeared last year. And mitigation funds were part of what was already going on. All of the cities are already paying into the homeless mitigation funds, in case you didn't know that.
We do.
Cities are already paying and, and the money is broken down with a formula. And where there are community resource centers located within cities, they get their share of that money. And so, there's a requirement to be able to qualify. You have to have a certain number of beds to be a tier-one, tier-one mitigation, I believe it is. And that number of beds is 80 beds. The local homeless council, which ours met, they meet every other month, we met about a week ago, the local homeless council and those providers of services for people who are homeless or who have the housing, like the permanent supportive housing, everyone in the room agreed that that, an 80-bed facility will fill immediately in Davis County, immediately. And then, begins the work of stabilizing those folks so that they can then start, hopefully, many leave within 30 days and there's room for others, so.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Anyone else? Councilmember Blackham?
The only thing is, do, do you get a credit in your area if you have some transitional housing already there like we do?
Great question. That was one of our really biggest things. That's why, you know, I was emailing everyone and I was shocked and whenever, when this bill appeared, I just said, oh, my gosh, we've worked hard to be upstream of homelessness. Why are we being punished, right? No, there's no credit for having permanent supportive housing. But again, that is the key. We need more permanent supportive housing here, too. Not everyone qualifies with, with what Davis Behavioral Health has, therefore, the chronically mentally ill, right? Who would otherwise be homeless without, they have no, no other resources. There's plenty of people out there experiencing homelessness who have chronic mental illness and it's often co-occurring with substance use, in case you didn't know that. Often co-occurring.
Commissioner, will you talk about the 8.2 million for the Davis Behavioral Health facility?
Oh, yeah, that's the good news. This request was prioritized even higher than our ask by, by everyone, by the Northern Utah Chamber Coalition as well as just everyone. So, again, permanent supportive housing. It's upstream of homelessness. It's more effective, less expensive, it's more successful, all the things. And so, for years, at least three years, Davis Behavioral Health has been working to build more and to have one facility that has 60 units in addition to their scattered site that they've been accumulating over years. And so, they had just a final gap. They've already bought the land, they have already gotten other grants. There are grants out there that can help. That's another thing that's going to help fund this, our CDBG and SSBG grants that come from the federal government. But they had just a gap of 8.8 million and that was the request. And it took all the way to, almost to the last day from being, everyone thought they were getting it, they were getting it, they were ranked third, which is very high to be ranked in the Social Services Subcommittee. And then, it came down to the last week and it was gone, nothing. And, and I worked really hard on that, too. And so did a lot of other people. And it was kind of a miracle, seems like, and the last day, they got 8.2, which is enough to now build it.
And that will be on Main Street in Leighton, correct?
The place, the land that they have purchased is right next.
I talked to Ryan.
Yeah, it's right next to their, their existing big administration and services building. So, it is on Main Street in Leighton, on the very south, and it's almost on the Kaysville border. Yeah. And I just want to say, this 60-unit place, I'm super excited about it, too, because it is very, it's also very successful. Not, there's not one that exists like it in the state of Utah, but there is one in a very nice community in Colorado, Fort Collins. I've been there, too. It exists in Fort Collins and it's been so successful for their community, upstream of homelessness, they're building a second one, a 60-unit facility. And they shared the plans with Davis Behavioral Health, so.
All right, thank you, Council. Any other questions? Commissioner, thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I will have to buzz. I, I would love to stay, but our commission comes and visits city council, so we'll be back anyway, sooner than later. And anyone can reach out if you have some question that didn't get addressed. Okay, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, everybody. So, now we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak during public comments. So, let me get off the list. Okay. We have, so I'll, I'll announce your names if you would come up in this order. We allow, we allow for five people. We have 11, 12 people signed up. If, I'm hoping that most of your questions were answered during this presentation. So, if you're willing to yield your time to somebody else, please raise your hand after I say your name, okay? So, Drew Chamberlain. Come on down. You have three minutes and your microphone will go silent after three minutes.
The Commissioner needs to hear this. Excuse me. My comment would be just, just say no. Just say no. And if the state gives you an unfunded mandate, do the same thing we do when the federal government gives us unfunded mandates. We sue them, okay? Sue the state, just say no. Let me solve your Code Blue problem real quickly. When it gets to 18 degrees, just open your city halls. Done. Doesn't cost you anything. And let me tell you my experience with homelessness. Years ago, I was, and some of you I've talked to before, but years ago, I was a, worked as a bellman in a downtown hotel. I worked a night shift. It was very boring. But I did get the chance to talk to lots of homeless people, all of them men. I was talking to them not as somebody who could give them something, but as an equal. So, they were very honest with me. 80%, at least 80%, maybe more of the men that I spoke to were homeless by choice and they were homeless because they were avoiding child support. So, so every dollar that you spend on homelessness, and I firmly believe this, every dollar that you spend on homelessness is a dollar that you're taking away, away from a child that deserves home, or that deserves child support and is not getting it because we're pandering to a deadbeat dad. And why don't we ever talk about this? It's never mentioned, but, but that is the truth with homeless men. Now, there are exceptions, of course, and we have a battered shelter for women by my house here, just in Kaysville, but I just, I just wish we'd stopped spending money on homelessness because the government screws everything up. And when you're, when you enable a deadbeat dad, every dollar that you're spending on homelessness is taking money from children that need child support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak. I own the business just directly across from the place you toured, the Emission Building. I've been told in no uncertain terms that they will, if I gave it to them for free, they would move out immediately. They're a very successful business, but they don't want a Code Blue, they don't want a, any permanent structure. Kamala's words were exactly, it's an amazing, happy place, not for Kaysville. I have talked to her personally. I really wish she was here, so I won't say anything about that conversation. But everybody who's voting in this room and in Kaysville needs to call her personally and ask her this question. For any amount of money, yes or no, are you for a Code Blue or a permanent building for any amount of money, no matter how it looks, in Kaysville? I think you'll be surprised with what you heard here and what she told me. It's, it's just, it's different. Another thing, I'm just like you. I want somebody representing us that says, cold day in hell in Kaysville. And I won't vote for anybody that doesn't say that, very clearly, all the fluff we heard today. I don't want anything to do with it. Helping a family is what all of us want to do. My heart just weeps with anybody who goes without. So, just recently, we've done this many times, but this year, woman, no place to live, gave her rent, place for three months, paid in advance in a nice apartment. After that three months, she said, I don't want you to pay for that anymore. We said, why don't you want a safe, warm place this winter? She said, because I get 800 a month, my boyfriend gets 800 a month on an EBT card. Every single person. They'll never marry because they each get that 800. So, free Medicare, anywhere they go, free, I don't get that, they do, dental and everything. A UTA pass, completely paid for, nothing there. Vouchers, she talks about that money running out. Vouchers for free hotel stays when your tent's too cold or your van or whatever it is, a place to go. Hundreds of people a year, including myself, go and do all we can to throw that out there. 100% of the people we've dealt with don't want it. They go back to that. We just wasted that money. Done it several times, not going to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Ware.
Well, thank you for answering my question.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm a little concerned when Commissioner Kamalu first started talking, she said, the bill said a temporary Code Blue facility. And by the time she got done and started talking, 75 or 85% of her, everything that she talked about was about a permanent homeless facility in Davis County. That confused me. I've been a resident of Kaysville City for 51 years. I do not want to see Kaysville turn into a Seattle, Washington, or a Portland, Oregon when they put up a facility for a certain position, for a certain time or whatever, and the next thing you know, they're into drugs, they're into killings and problems and everything throughout the city, not just in the shelter itself. It's the whole city ends up bearing the repercussions of those facilities. We do not have, as far as I'm thinking, a place here in Kaysville that would fit the bill for a temporary Code Blue with the transportation, with this, 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 this. There's just not a place. And I, I'm totally against him.
Thank you. Lorraine Starkey. You're yielding to Jennifer Brooks? Come on down.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Brooks. I'm a resident of Davis County. I will not appeal to your emotion or your passion today because I'm tired of that. But I will appeal to the honest people here and to common sense and to intelligent people who can recognize that there is a series of coincidences taking place in Davis County that is disturbing. It's occurring simultaneously, it's funded by the same federal sources, some of it, especially the CARES Act that's come through COVID funding, it's promoting the same harmful, community-wide social services agenda to our children and our families. social services agenda to our children and our families, the wraparound services agenda. There is no transparency, there is no public input, it is rammed through, it is aggressively marketed as something important and good, and there is no evidence, there is no empirical evidence of a need for all of these services. The count, first count was 45 homeless people. Then you start throwing in other things with not a true record or where that was collected. So let me give you a series of coincidences. First of all, Davis School District signed onto an agreement with the DOJ requiring a federal agreement, requiring federal data from our entire community and all our minor students bi-yearly be submitted to the DOJ. That is going regardless. We have no say in that. It is, it is submitted in a format designed specifically for re-categorizing. Did any of you know that? Now you do. This is an extremely expensive settlement at the cost of actually educating our children, which leaves them with less of a future. It also has labeled one group victims and one group of oppressors. So we have established that through a DOJ ruling. Two to three years ago in this district, a man named Robbie Kinghorn, who is now a private federal contractor for community schools, and he answers to Savannah Hunt at our state office, who is incentivized to give federal grants to our schools, he filed for six federal grants for six elementary schools in Davis District. Our district now has more federal funding than any other entity in our state. Community schools are wraparound school, it's a federal program, a federal initiative for wraparound services to use our schools as social service centers. That's health clinics, vision clinics, mental health clinics, and parent training. Only the federal government dictates what that looks like within our taxpayer-funded schools. This is the federal community school playbook, is funded and promoted by the teachers' union. Some quotes from that, "The school will become the center of the community, as it should be. Teachers and administrators will become the major decision-makers, and schools will now have more power and influence over students, families, and communities." And of course, this is at the cost of quality schools. Am I done?
You're done.
There's lots more. The teen centers, can I quote the correct number? Right now, if you go onto our district website, the teen center says it serves 1,300. They are recruiting students to go to the teen centers for snacks, and they count that as a service. Any identity-concerned teens have now found a place to safely hang out. They call that a service. Administrators, counselors, teachers are told to walk any student with a concern to the teen center. They did not promote these with a need, they ramrodded them through. So that's where we're at.
Jim Lee.
Thank you so much for having us. I think it's very helpful. I really agree with Commissioner Kamaloo's point. It's a complex issue. It is complex. It's a tricky population to help. She mentioned the severe mental illness. Some say it's twenty-five percent of homeless, the substance abuse, the violence. I just want to mention two case studies that we, I'll have a chance to, I've had a chance to see. Many of you know about Pioneer Park in Salt Lake City. It's very near to the homeless services, and it's quite frankly, almost a, I mean, no entrance zone. It is so dangerous. No single woman would ever dare walk there, no kids play there. They've really taken over. So I'm not sure, in all the talk about helping the homeless, we somehow think we're going to eliminate the severely mentally ill ones, and I just don't know if that's possible. So I'm concerned about locating something like that near children. The other case report is this very horrific, but it started out so well-meaning, a smart family hiring a homeless guy to fix their roof. Six or seven months later, he comes and abducts their daughter, Elizabeth Smart. They were very well-meaning, and it just all of a sudden turned very bad on them. So I'm, wherever this gets put, I think we have to be very careful about protecting our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I know that there are some other people that have signed up to speak. We do have a sixth limit law. If there is someone in the audience that signed up to speak, that has something to say that is in addition to what's already been shared, please raise your hand. I'm assuming you know if you signed up to speak. That many of you. Okay. All right. Please be expeditious, okay? Expeditious. Please be sensitive as far as the time goes, and we'll let you keep going for a minute. That was Jim.
I want to thank you for letting me take a few minutes of your time. The only concern I have is, is like everybody else, is that when it comes to the ability of elected people, they don't allow us, the commoners, you don't allow our input to be part of that. They got a fancy task force that just includes the mayors, doesn't include people like me. And there's plenty of evidence around that homeless people, as we just heard, but in addition, is that going to include illegals? It comes here. We have no idea. And we know, and it's being buried by the media, but you can find it, that the other countries that are putting illegals here are sending their criminals to this land. And there's one today from Venezuela that he's, has, quotingly, has 550,000 members, and he's put out an attack that he wants all of everybody to attack America. And we have to assume those threats are real. And that's all I really wanted to say from that standpoint. We have a threat, and I agree, there's challenges with some of the homeless. Nobody wants to be out in the cold. But I would suggest that anybody that's, that's really behind it, give them a tent and put them on their property, and let them be there for a year, and have them come back and tell us how it worked out for them.
Thank you. Okay, Cheryl. Cheryl? No? Okay. Jason, Laurie? Yeah, Largie. Largie? Largie? Largie, sorry. I'm so bad with names.
Sorry, Jason Largie. I know you've heard from me several times. I really appreciate extending the opportunity here. We did just hear it, and I'll try and limit what I say to things that haven't been really talked about. I'd like to urge the county, the City of Kaysville, to request an independent audit of the data that Commissioner Kamaloo keeps touting. I'm a statistician, and statistics is the art of torturing data till it tells you what you want to hear. And I believe that's, I believe that's what's happening. These data gathering events are agenda-driven. There's an intent. I love what was said earlier about the intent behind these wraparound services that are here. The cities that the Commissioner kept touting as places you don't want to go, if you look, they are all sanctuary cities. There are three counties in Utah that are sanctuary counties, where the sheriff's offices will not enforce ICE law. It's Cache County, Washington County, Utah County. So this great switch point is in a place where the police will not enforce immigration law. And I wish we would classify and stop using illegal immigrants. They're criminal migrants. They're people that are coming here on purpose. I know a Border Patrol agent who, in northern Utah and Idaho, who travels around to gather illegal, and, and they can only focus on violent criminals who are here illegally. They transported one back to Mexico. Seventy-two hours later, he was back in the exact same place where they picked him up and deported him from. So there's a, there's a focused, agenda-driven machine sending people here on purpose. And I really, the second, the other point I want to make sure I make is, please, no matter what the county does, no matter what the state does, please continue to enforce all laws regarding panhandling homelessness, vagrancy, all those things in our city regardless of what they say. That will keep the problem out of Kaysville no matter what they have. If they continue to get picked up and taken somewhere else, we will not have a tent city in Kaysville. I appreciate our police force, and I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, last on our list is Mark Quinlan. Did I pronounce your last name correctly? Close enough? Okay. All right.
All right, thank you. I think there's one way to put this to bed really quick, is for you to all say definitively, "This will not happen," and for the Commissioner to say that. Then all the concern would go away. Until a decision is made, the, the chance that it could end up here still exists. So if you say that definitively, you could put people at ease about that. I also think that what we've heard today is a lot of rainbows and unicorns. That facility sounds great. I applaud their efforts. I think everybody here is compassionate and wants to help. And we can look at all the great things that happened, but that sounds like a perfect scenario. We know that this issue is not perfect, and it goes south very quickly in a lot of places. I worked at the gateway for four years, right outside the road home. I had to walk through the people that hung out there, yelling at me, asking me for money, following me, following single women. I had to go to lunch and walk through this. A man in broad daylight in rush hour traffic got stabbed in front of a lot of people during rush hour, right at the end of the day. I worked there and I saw it for four years on a daily basis. We know that the Venezuelan drug cartels were sending young boys there, having them dress up as homeless, sending them with bags of drugs, and said, "You need to come back today with money, or we will kill your family back in Venezuela." So we can talk about all the great things and the help that people want to do, and I'm a compassionate person, I feel bad. But we cannot talk about this issue without talking about all of the negatives that will follow. There will be drugs, there will be assaults, there will be crime of all different types, cars will be broken into. And we have to think about that and not just say that we all want to help and rah-rah because we want to do that, but if this happens in Davis County, and I say if, I hope that it does not happen, it has got to be away from residential areas. We love people, all people, but, and we can have compassion for them, but let's have compassion for the people that already live here that you will be introducing danger into the community. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to demean anyone who is homeless. That is not a judgment of them, but the simple facts are, that is what will happen. It will happen, and there's nothing we can do to stop it. And the last thing I want to say to quote Field of Dreams, "If you build it, they will come."
Absolutely.
Right? And they, and they will not, they will not all be from Davis County. I can promise you that. Jackson Hole buses people in. They don't let homeless people be there. They buy a ticket, they put them on a bus, and they send them to Salt Lake. And that will happen here as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, my question on the right list, I just, a moment, really hasn't been touched on.
Wait, wait, wait. This is not a vote, this is not a voteable issue, but, but yes, calm on down. Come on down. Let's make sure that we're still respectful to everybody. Thanks, everyone.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I feel bad, and at the same time, I don't feel bad, so. My name is Mike Lyon. The thing that I, I felt strongly during this entire time is that I think we're all being a little bit naive when we sit back and we say, "Hey, our site location is bad." That's not true at all. That is not true in one ounce at all. Our police can get from here to that center in less than probably one minute and thirty seconds, which is a big pro. Our police, our fire department can also get there that fast. If you were to actually kind of take line of sight, and you were to think about, okay, what about their access to a grocery store? Can they do it in less than a mile? Yeah, they can, absolutely. And are the homeless willing to walk? Absolutely, no problem. Do we have Ogden Clinic being built right across from Smith, which we'd even shorten the distance for their need for emergency services? Absolutely, no problem. Do they have a nice park where they could go and find a restroom, multiple restrooms, and have a place to sit and shade and relax and do all those different things? Absolutely. Are the common areas very, very close by that would be very easy to facilitate for them to sit and park for long term? All over the place. The HOA that I'm a part of has intense amounts of open space where I'm sure it would be an expensive and horrendous issue for us. So please, don't, if anyone says, "We don't have a good site," we're right next to a UTA lot. They can go up the street, around by Tanner, and boom, they've got access to UTA that will take them all through Main Street and all over the place. So it is not a far walk for a homeless person, and it really, if you measure it on all those things, it's not a bad site. Another thing you could look at too is, is that when you look at the load that Utah, that Davis County carries as far as responses to domestic violence, Clearfield, Leighton, all those have tremendous load. Kaysville is bored. They probably have less than one a day, if you actually mind the data. So the truth is, is our police force is better handled to handle the response needed in case there were disturbances that would come from all of this. Okay, so please understand those facts, and I'm just, I'm just nervous that we're walking around saying, "No, that's a terrible site." So please just consider that, okay?
Yep, appreciate you. Thank you. Public comment is closed. Thank you. Okay, so Mike, to your point, when Commissioner Kamaloo said, in her sweet way, that the mayor, me, took them very seriously and maybe overreacted, I guess, as far as identifying the Emission Site, that is completely true for all of these reasons, because these were all part of the conversation. That site is near a bus line. That site is near a park. That site is near a grocery store, within walking distance. That site doesn't have a lot of residential houses around it. Yes, there are some houses. So that is why I took it very seriously. There is no way in hell, I personally will condone or authorize or allow and do everything that I possibly can to make sure that a homeless shelter of any kind happens in Kaysville. I, we will not stand for it. Okay. Now, now, that being said, we are doing this in a kind way, okay? Kaysville is not the right location for this, for, for all of the data-driven reasons. And so that's what we keep telling everybody as far as the task force goes. That's why I volunteered to join the task force. That is why when they said, "Let's have a billboard discussion," we brought it to our council meeting. We wanted our community to know what's going on. We want you to be informed. We, we need you, we need you to rally, and we need you to make sure that this is not the right location for Kaysville. Not only for all of the reasons that everyone's mentioned, but it is a great location for other reasons, like Mike just mentioned. So we want to make sure that we just let everyone know that Kaysville's not the right location as a city. We are not the city for homelessness here in Kaysville and Davis County. So, so, and, and I'm not just saying that as, as the mayor. I'm saying that we are aligned as a council, we are aligned as staff. There was an email, I think it was an email that originally went out with some incorrect information. I did call the individual who sent the email, and I said, "Why did you say that?" And this person said, "Well, I wasn't sure where you stand. I want to be clear where we stand as a city, where I stand personally. I've said it over and over, and I will continue to say it, not in Kaysville." So, so that is, that's the discussion as far as homelessness goes. The permanent shelter, now, this is another discussion, you know, the email mentioned code blue. When we first heard about a code blue as a potential response, the minute that a dollar is spent, we all know, as soon as money's invested, it's not temporary anymore. The original law, H.Bill 4999, was written that it would be a winter response, and it would rotate through cities in, in different counties. So for two years, it would be in Kaysville. For two years, it would be in Leighton. As soon as a dollar is spent on any one location, then you just have a mess. You have multiple locations where people are thinking that homeless services are going to be offered, even if it was intended to, to rotate through. We've taken a lot of time, and I don't want to keep you guys, but I just wanted to let you know what's going on as far as legislation. So the new law, that law was supposed to expire in 2025. So that's why the replacement law, replacement bill, I think it's, I don't actually have the number in my head as far as the reference to the bill. But it was, it was a bill that said, "Okay, if a county has a plan, and the county submits this plan for some sort of a permanent facility, then you don't have to respond to the winter response. You don't have to provide that as a temporary." Because we were very concerned from the Kaysville side that this Emission Center, as we were walking through with the county, we were concerned. A million dollars was mentioned. Okay, we, we maybe need to remove ductwork here, we need to remodel bathrooms here. As soon as money goes into a facility, it's not temporary. And that's what alerted me, and that's what concerned us very greatly. And so that's why we've had these discussions. Now, that being said, this idea of a permanent facility... Now, that being said, this idea of a permanent facility, we've had discussions from a really big facility in, in, in our minds. Nothing permanent has, has been talked about or communicated. It's just, I said last night at the task force meeting, I cannot be expected as a task force member to make any type of decisions until I have data. I don't know, and scrub data, for sure. Scrub data that's accurate. I can't vote for a size or a location until we have requirements. I don't even, I'm not in the, in the homeless business. I don't know what shelter requirements are. So we need more information to be able to make that decision. This idea of a permanent plan for the county to be submitted to the state by August of 2025 is simply saying, look, we have a plan, sure. If we have the data that proves and we have the funding that will provide the, the money needed to build some sort of a permanent facility, fine, that will be our plan. But this plan is not a implementable plan. It is a visionary plan. It's a future plan. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear with everybody. Someone mentioned, you know, why can't we as, as residents be contributors for this conversation? That's why you've elected us, right? So we're making the best decisions that we can make. Had you been in the room, we assume that there would be this decision that you would probably make, given all the information that we have at hand. So please continue to reach out for us because we want to know what you think and we want to know how you feel. Trying to think if there's anything else I needed to touch on. So you guys have, have received some great information. Hopefully you'll feel good going back. Please share the information. Let, let everyone know that this is where Kaysville stands. We have not wavered. We've been very consistent in where we stand as far as saying that Kaysville City is not equipped to handle a permanent or a temporary shelter. As far as Code Blue response, now the law was kind of confusing initially. There was a Code Blue requirement and then there's a winter response requirement. The state or the county is exempted from the winter response requirement. That is for during a calendar period of time. The Code Blue response is if every other bed in the county is full and it's really cold, it's 18 degrees or colder. Then they turn to the, to the county to say, okay, we've got all these people that are still on the streets. We haven't experienced that yet. What will we continue to do until a permanent solution is found? We'll continue to provide hotel vouchers, UTA passes, we'll, we'll continue doing what the county has done in the past moving forward. So that's, that's the plan. So I hope, I hope you don't have any questions. If you do have questions, please email us, call us, text us. You guys are already doing all of that. I'm in multiple group messages throughout the community and it's really fun to be able to respond to all those. I know, I know people are very active on social media. If you post on Facebook and you happen to tag me, I still might not see it. Please, if you have a question, call me. Call me, text me, email me, come to City Hall, I'm here a lot, as well as the other council members. So we hope that we provided the information that you needed and came here today to receive. So that being said, council, do you have anything you want to add to that? Okay, let's move on with our agenda. Okay, we are now on item number four, conflicts of interest. Thank you for being here. Council, do you have anything to?
Hell no.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to move the consent agenda? Consent items A through H? Oh yeah, well, I asked, did you, did you have any?
No.
Okay, yeah. I, I did. No problem. All right.
Just, are the members of the committee for the RAMP committee, are they here? I just want to know.
Oh, hi.
Who they're gonna be.
Okay. Oh, you know what? They're not included on here, are they? They were in the packet. Let me.
I didn't, I didn't see the names in the packet.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, let me look and see, just a second.
Did you see the names?
I did not. And she wants to, I just introduced herself, so we.
Sure, come on up. Would you like to? You don't have to. You, you are, you are welcome to do that. Do we need to make a motion to move that item off the consent agenda?
You don't need to move it off. I just was hoping we could recognize who they were. I don't need to move it off.
Okay, come on.
I understand, there should have been three, correct?
Yeah.
But I didn't see in the packet.
I'm Ellen King. I've been a resident of Kaysville City for 10 years and absolutely loved it. I come from Idaho, from Boise, and, and loved it there. And we've been so happy to be here. I have five kids that have been active in community sports in schools, all the schools, lots of different programs, been team mom for many different teams, robotics club, science olympiad, and, and been supportive. And so I love this community. I love the programs that we have here. I love the parent support that we have here. And have a friend that was submitting a grant application for the RAMP committee to evaluate, and she asked if I would consider writing a letter of support for that. And when I went onto the website to kind of get some background on it and saw that they were taking applications, I thought, this could be a great way to just support what we do here. I love it. I've, like I said, I've got my, my kids have been involved for a long time. I've done things myself. And I just wanted to be able to, to support the efforts that, that all of the wonderful people that are involved in those programs are doing. And so, yeah, that's why I'm here.
All right, well, thank you very much. Congratulations. We're excited to have you on RAMP.
It was in the staff report.
That's what I thought.
So there's David Weaver, Ellen King, and Derek Rayner.
And Annabelle Hunt. We will officially.
Is that you as well?
Oh, yeah, oh, I said let voicemail. Okay, so we, oh, David, hi, David. Would you like to say anything or are you good?
No, this has been very entertaining.
Thank you, all right. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to move the consent items A through H?
I'll make a motion that we move consent items A through H.
I'm sorry, to approve.
To be approved.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, passes, thank you. Now we're on action, action item 6A, an amendment to the Kaysville City Consolidated Fee Schedule related to development review fees. I'll turn the time over to Josh.
Or, or you have to shave your beard.
Not an option. I think my wife would kill me. Okay, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us some time to visit with you tonight. At the last council meeting, we came and talked with you about development review fees. And have had time since then to dive a little deeper into what the development process is like, both here in Kaysville as well as other communities. And trying to determine, you know, for Kaysville, how do we accurately assign the financial costs to where they're originating from? Had great input from council as well as from Jason here on, on how we can approach this. And what we kind of settled on was, you know, we, we have a, a base cost that Melinda established or I guess amended, I think, last year or so. But as, as we've looked at that, those numbers are fairly conservative. Kaysville takes the approach that these fees are based on, on what a, like, kind of cookie cutter or plain or simple development would look like. And the time required to go through the coordination and reviews, that's, that's a fairly lengthy process even for a simple subdivision. But there's certain sites that we see development proposals come in on that are a little bit more complicated than others. And that's where we kind of focused on these complicating factors. As it currently stands, a very complex subdivision would be paying the exact same development review fees as a very simple subdivision. So what you have before you are the numbers that we came up with through this process and want to turn it over to council for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember Hunt.
Okay, just a couple of questions, Josh. So we kind of talked about this once and, and I went over this and numbers don't often stay in my head in a meaningful way for a long period of time. And so is this what we're seeing, what we kind of talked about in our previous meeting between you and I and Melinda and, and Mike? Or did we, did you make changes? Because I thought I remembered it being like concrete numbers, but now it says like 50% of lot line adjustment.
Yeah, so that the concrete numbers that we went over were, all right, let's take an example of a subdivision that has this many lots and it has these certain site characteristics, this is what those numbers would look like. What you see here is what would be in the fee schedule of, okay, start plugging the numbers into your subdivision so that you come up with those dollar numbers.
Okay, and then, just, I guess, do you feel like this will adequately cover the cost? I mean, I know you said it's conservative. Do you feel like it's, it's, it's conservative or do you, I mean, conservative enough or?
Yeah, I, I, I think we, as we talked about previously, we're not looking at this as like a revenue generator. We're looking at this as what, what's expended. We want to get as close as we can to trying to get that back, but we're probably never going to always get there. So, yeah, in, in answer to your question, especially as we've looked at what other communities are doing compared with reviewing with Dexter before he left, what we're doing here, what it takes here, we still feel like these numbers are conservative. And since the meeting that we had, we made additional changes that further reduce those numbers just to make sure that, you know, we feel comfortable and confident with the approach that we've got here.
Okay, and then just one more question. I maybe said that was the last one, but I had another one. When, with the, kind of the base fee that we have right now, we've kind of discussed that it's not adequate to cover all of the time we spend reviewing these plans. So I guess kind of just for anyone else here to know, where, where does the funding come to cover that additional kind of review time that we're, we're spending that we aren't charging for?
So, so currently, those funds would come from mostly the general fund, but there, there's also portions of the water fund, storm water fund that would be factoring in there, you know, staff as they're reviewing the storm drain plans, LID, storm drain cals as staff is reviewing culinary water sizing and, and density and impacts to our, our water system there. So I'd say the vast majority are general fund with some from water and storm water as well.
Awesome, thanks. And I think I'll have stuff to say later, but since we're asking questions, I'll.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, just a quick question. You, you mentioned that you kind of altered the funds a little bit to make some of them even more conservative. Normally I like the sound of that, but are you able to cover the cost with this increase? Are you able to cover all the costs without dipping into the general fund or the water fund?
I, I think it'd probably be really hard to get to that unless we went through like true cost accounting of, here is an itemized bill of the hours that we expended and please submit payment within 30 days type of approach. This, this kind of approach acknowledges that there are some instances where it might be more. And there is certainly the, the potential that it, it could be less, but I, I don't think that's likely. All of these factors that you see here, the likelihood of, of all of these applying to any given site is virtually zero. Even half of these applying to any given site, site is extremely low. And I, and I think I had mentioned in the email that if we did have a complicated site, you might be looking at one or two of these rows, these factors applying to a site. Obviously, as you go up to the top here of this table, really what's going to be applying to the development review is preliminary plat, final plat, and development improvement drawings. Lot line adjustment, the easement vacation, those are things that are included in the same realm with, within the, the fee schedule. But the development review is kind of what we're mostly focused on right now with that legislation.
Just a little bit, you know, when we look at all the projects that need to be done in the city, all the piping and, and replacing old or, or insufficient equipment, I get a little nervous when we're not charging adequate fees for the work that's being required of staff. And then dipping into other parts of the city budget. And then in that case, we put upon all the residents to raise taxes to cover that. And so I, I'm even inclined to say if, if, if you need to adjust this further, even upwards a little bit to cover all of that, I would be even okay with that. But I, I like where you're going with this so that we can be a well-functioned city, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Oaks.
Yeah, no, I guess my comment would be along the line with Councilmember Jack, Jackson, because I hate the thought of us, of the city subsidizing someone, a developer who's going to pass it on to the home, the home buyer. But I just have a difficult time having us subsidize someone trying to buy a home. And because then all of our taxes are going into this. And I, I got it, we're just, we're talking dollars overall, but it's it, it's. It's the principal, thank you. And so if you feel, and this is something that, you know, hey, in a year you'd look and see, it didn't cover our costs, just adjust it again a little bit. That, that would be my only comment on it, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blackham.
Can I go on a rant a little bit? It's okay, just, I'll, I'll try.
Nobody else has tonight.
But what I want to say is, first of all, before I start my rant, I really appreciate what Josh has done. He has justified this. We had a good meeting. I gave him some hard questions. He came up with some really good answers. He's justified everything he's done here. And so to start out what I have to say, thank you. You've, you've done a good job in getting these fees and
Thank you to Melinda as well.
And, and getting where they're at, and I understand, and, you know, because it is a general fund item and general fund is funded through taxes. And we've covered the general fund, but I understand there's always ways to put money into the general fund. But this is my rant. My rant is, it's a 20-lot subdivision. You're going to build it in Kaysville, it's going to be up on a mountainside next to a stream, and it's going to require additional things. And I agree with how you've done this. You should be that way. And then somebody's developer is going to go do a 20-lot subdivision somewhere down in another city, next, out in the middle of a field, next to all the utilities, no difficult problems in there whatsoever. And he's going to call Ross Ford and Taz Basinger and he's going to tell them that I tried to do a 20-lot subdivision in Kaysville and it took me this much more time and it didn't, it cost me this much more, and I did one over here. And they're going to go over there and they're going to go find somebody like Senator Vickers and they're going to go through and say, we need to write a bill that says if we turn a subdivision plat into a city, they have to accept it as long as it's got a civil engineer stamp on it. That's what I don't like, you know? And that's what we're seeing. And, and so, but as far as justifying your costs and what you've done, it's great. And, and I'm, I, you know, and the sad part is, is they're going to tant it, taunt it as it being affordable housing. Really what you've talked about here is going to add an additional $250 to a lot. Uh-uh. Developer's going to add thousands of dollars to that lot and they're going to start with that rant saying, well, Kaysville City made me do this. And you've heard them say before, what's wrong with maximizing profits? That's what we do. And then they're going to blame the city for affordable housing when it really isn't our fault. We didn't do it. All we did was try to cover our costs and you did it in a legitimate way with the data to show that what you were doing was correct. That's my rant and it frustrates me that that's what happens and that's what you'll hear. And when it goes up to the hill, all you're going to hear is Ross and Taz get up there and say, we're running this bill through, through the senator because Kaysville City is not adhering to the affordable housing and they're charging us more money when in reality, Kaysville City was being reasonable with their costs. They were trying to keep them as low as possible to try to keep costs down. And the developer's going to come back or whoever's going to say, what cost us 200, they're going to say it's $3,000 additional dollars per lot that we had to do and it's just not true. And that's what happens. And that's so frustrating to me.
Agreed.
Good point, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Blackham. Anyone else?
Okay. Then we will. Oh, sorry. So I just had a few comments since I asked my questions. Can I just say that, sorry, so I just had a few comments, since I asked my questions, I wanted to, questions first, um, but just kind of wanted to, second what everyone else is saying, you know, we don't want to be supplementing development fees with our taxpayers' dollars, and especially, you know, as a city, we're supposed to have hard conversations, we're not supposed to have an excess of funds if we do, we're doing something wrong. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't have hard conversations, but I have been in a lot of conversations where it's like, "We need more staff, and we just can't do it." So, I'm hoping, as I'm sure you are, that this will help kind of help to fill that gap, and appreciate all your work on it. I know you and Dexter and Melinda and several other staff have spent a lot of time, and I really appreciate the thought process that's gone into that.
Yeah, this is, this has been a, a, a big effort amongst a lot of people, Dexter and Melinda, as you mentioned, as well as others, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, all right, we have three people signed up for public comment on this agenda item. Not sure if they're still here, but, uh, Mike, Bert, Mike McCrany, and Randy Clem. Nope? Okay, all right, well then, we will close public comment, and, uh, council, do we have, are we ready for a motion, or do we want to have additional discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Oh, he'll make a motion.
Yeah, no, I, I motion that we approve the amendment to Kaysville City Consolidated Fee Schedule related to development reviewer fees.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you so much, Josh. Right, councilmember reports. Anyone have anything that they would like to report? Oh, councilmember Hunt.
CTC got a name and a vision statement this week, so we're excited about that, we just got started. They're so new that they slipped my mind, but they're awesome, and I'm excited to have them, and it's been, it's taken a long time, but it's good progress.
Councilmember Hunt serves on the board for Communities That Care, for Davis County, so thank you for that. Anyone else? Councilmember Oaks?
Yeah, just, um, with the ramp board members being approved, uh, talking with Cole, and we'll schedule the first, uh, meeting for the ramp, I believe, mid-April, and get that started for the year.
Thank you so much, that's great. Those ramp funds are, are wonderful investments back into the community.
Yeah.
Uh, Jason?
Uh, Mayor, I've got a couple of things, but I'll, I'll postpone those, and just put those in my report tomorrow.
Okay.
They're not too exciting.
All right, well, thank you.
You know what?
Yes, councilmember Adams.
We started Fourth of July talk, so get ready, it's going to be a doozy.
A good doozy.
A good doozy.
Okay.
Moving fireworks to Eastside, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, my God.
Uh, Easter, two, Easter, the Easter egg hunt is, uh, next week, Saturday, get there early, like literally the kids grab the eggs within 45 seconds, there might be an Easter bunny.
A very tall Easter bunny.
I have a question for you, councilmember Adams. Um, there's been a few comments that I've seen online from families who want to know if there's going to be any separation with age categories, because they're worried about their two and three-year-olds compared to, you know, like the 10-year-olds want, not wanting them to get trampled.
Oh, in the Easter egg hunt?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, I believe that each, uh, like, the different separate fields are for the age groups. So, yeah, as long as they, they should, you city council should be there, I just recommend getting there early, that's the big thing, because they line them up, and so, you gotta, you gotta be ready to go.
What time?
Uh, I think it's at 9:00 AM. Yeah, 9:00 AM.
It starts at 9:00 AM and 9...
It ends at 9...
Point 0045, it is over.
It's fast, it's fast.
All right, thank you so much. Um, my little blurb report is just simply that, yes, even though the city stands united in terms of saying that Kaysville's not the location, and I should have said this before, if the county or the state owns property with the city, they do preempt the city's right, right, Jason? Okay. Okay, we, we will not change our position, for sure, and we are very vocal, we're very vocal about it, but, um, I should have mentioned that.
Can I ask to that point, too? There's seven mayors on the, the committee, and then one commissioner, but the county still has the authority?
If, if the county, so the task, no, so the task force in terms of making a recommendation or making a decision...
It's just a recommendation, and then...
I, I'm not sure exactly in the wording of the law, but I know that the task force has the authority to choose locations. Um, and it sounds like from Commissioner Kamalu's report, that the task force will be the end-all. But at, at some point, if the state of Utah came in and said, "Hey, Layton, Kaysville